We are live on YouTube.
All right, meeting is called to order July 24th. Any special intentions? Any special intentions?
Yes, Tom. Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to mention Frankie Howard. I don't know those of you who do or don't know Frankie, but he was a long time or is a long time sheriff of Vernon Parish. He had served three terms in the state legislature as a state representative. He's in need of your prayers. He's in ICU with COVID-19 and his symptoms are very severe. Please keep him and his family in your prayers. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Egan Ed Rapier from St. Andrew the Apostle Church. Will you lead us in the invocation?
Certainly, let us pray. Almighty in ever living God, we turn our hearts to you and ask you to bless your blessings upon this council and upon our great city. We thank you for the gifts you have endowed upon us above all inalienable rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Watch over our nation, state, and city. Protect us from those who wish to harm us. Dispel the forces of division and hatred that drive us apart. Bring us together in the pursuit of our common good and in solidarity with all peoples. Unite us in the task of doing the business of our great city. Guide our decisions by the light of your divine wisdom and prudence that this world may overflow with your peace, justice, and love. We ask all of this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Also, Member McKinney, would you lead us in the pledge?
Allegiance.
Unmoot.
Yes. Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag. Yes, okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God indivisible.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum. In accordance with Council Resolution Number B 14550, please be advised that all cellular telephones, pagers, beepers, and other devices of this nature must be deactivated or silenced throughout the council meeting. Are there any resolutions, motions, or other items from the floor? Seeing none, seeing none, the consent agenda. Item one, approval of the regular council meeting of July 9th, 2020. We have. Item two is approval of alcoholic beverage permit applications. We have none. Item three, approval of bingo gathering applications. We have none. Item four, correspondence reports from the mayor, CIO, or department heads. Item four A at the request of the administration report from Mayor's on.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council Chairman. I want to go over a few numbers. As we know, we are dropping in revenue throughout the city, just like throughout the parish, just like throughout the state, throughout this country. Everybody's facing the same issue, but we have to be concerned with what's going on here in the city of Kenner. And I just want to go over, you know, four main resources that we usually get revenue from that and just give you a comparison to what they have dropped to. If you look at sales tax from May of 2019 compared to May of 2020, we've had a 28.28% drop. That reflects $988,000. Now, that's not good news at all. The only good news is that we see is that it's a 2% difference. We were 30% down for the month before that. And these figures do reflect May, which we only get two months later. So hopefully June, I don't see it, but hopefully June starts to show a little bit of a, I need to say increase, but a decrease in what we're losing, but an increase in what we're receiving. Airport sales tax, May of 2020 compared to May of 2019, an 84% difference to the negative, which is a $1.3 million issue in revenue. Parking tax revenue from May of 2019 to May of 2020. May of 2019 was $247,000 in revenue. This May was $60, $63,000. That's a huge drop, just like the other ones that we've mentioned. Treasure chests, when you do the true up for the year from July to July, 2019 was $750,000, 2020 was $92,000. We obviously have some revenue issues. And like I said, we're not by ourselves, we're not alone, but that doesn't make it any better when you have expenses for the city that we have to address and keep the city running. You do have something before you today. It's maintaining the same mileage rate today, and I believe it's non-v. I do ask for your support on that. It will retain the same mileage rate as what we've had in the past, and I think that's very important because we're not in a position to lose any revenue. We are looking at other revenue sources. We're looking at trying to keep these things sustained and obviously get them better. We don't want to start losing even more. And of course, this is all related to the pandemic. This is not related to city management, city administration, Kenner Police Department, Kenner Fire Department, or this Kenner Council. It is related to what we're experiencing with the pandemic. When we talk about getting more revenue, we're doing those things. We've, my administration has met this week with quite a few companies that are interested in coming into the city of Kenner in spite of what's going on. Those are good things, but those are things that don't happen tomorrow by the next council meeting. We are also looking at cuts. We met with the council yesterday, two or three of y'all at a time to discuss about how we can make some more cuts in spite of the cuts that we've made. No new hires. No differences on that in the, in the, the previous budget that y'all just passed. But one thing that we probably have to look at and something I have to address because I did promise that we probably would have news out this past Monday about break tags. What happened was we've had a few hurdles trying to get the break tags going. One of the biggest things was when the governor came out and extended the declaration for the two weeks. We don't see that getting any better anytime soon. The governor was on yesterday saying, go to the grocery one time a week. Don't take everybody with you. The governor is saying many things that are health precautions, and we do back that up. I'm not criticizing what he's saying. I'm supporting what he's saying. However, that still hurts our taxes. That also still puts our employees in jeopardy when they have to deal with break tags because you don't want to put an employee, as the numbers keep increasing, nothing's going down. As the numbers keep increasing with COVID, you don't, I'm not going to, and I don't want to, or am I going to, put an employee inside of somebody's car to put a break tag on? We have discussed inspection, COVID-19 inspection extension stickers. We have discussed numerous things of what we can do to have people feel like they have more of a break tag than just a certificate. I'm going to ask you to bear with us a little bit longer because by the next council meeting or hopefully within a few council meetings, there will be a change to the ordinance on how the break tags are broken down. Because in our discovery and our investigation of how we get break tags out, we discovered that we actually lose money on break tags. We do not make a penny by doing break tags here in the city of Kenner. By state law, we will continue to do a Kenner break tag. But I think we need to join the rest of the state, and I've discussed this with a few of the council members. I think we need to join the rest of the state on how, and just here in Justin Parish, unincorporated reaches out to other vendors. I have Hassan Molly McGuinness and also Chair Pitto, Molly's handling this part, put Molly McGuinness to go out there and see if there's vendors in the automotive industry that are interested in doing this. We would still keep some of the inspections for ourselves when it gets into commercial fleet. I believe that's right, Molly. We, we need to look at making sure that revenue is worthwhile. And we are generating nothing back to the city of Kenner. What it would also do is it would also help our businesses. If you're bringing it to, I'm not going to mention a special business, but if you're bringing it to your oil change place, I'm just saying that, or your car dealership that you're familiar with, you might get other things done there and hopefully we receive that indirect sales tax. We would if you're spending your money there. I think this is something we need to look at. It seems that the council has been supportive of it, and it's in the development stage. We're not getting away from a break tag in Kenner. It will still say a Kenner break tag. But this is to keep our employees safe, and this is to help some of our businesses and also get the break tags out sooner than what we thought. This has changed. I know my story has changed. I admit to that, but the pandemic changes every day. As the pandemic changes every day, our direction changes on the break tags. I ask you to still push as much as you can the certificate. The certificate is good throughout the state. It's good if you travel. No one, we have checked with other states, no one is giving a ticket for a break tag. If you get that for some reason, address this administration, call your councilman, call this administration, call me. We will look into it. I can tell you here the Kenner police are not doing it, Justin Parish is not doing it, the rest of the state's not doing it. For the break tag employees that we have, don't, don't want to leave this meeting with you thinking you're losing your job. That was one of the first questions that, well, if your director was here, your directors out, your assistant director had, Molly McGuinness is, I can't have these people losing their job, and that was never my intention. You will be reassigned. If you want to be reassigned, you'll be reassigned. We need more help in code anyway. So everyone will keep a job and plus we still need some people doing the commercial, and Molly knows more about that than I do. So that's, that's very important too, that you know you're not losing your job, that this council knows that no one is losing their job. Someone wants to retire, then they, they're doing that on their own. But we will keep everyone employed. I think this is the best way to handle it. The breakdown was kind of confusing when we saw it, but we will still get some revenue to keep going. What we get as a city, as the administration, this council to run this city, we will continue to get that. With that said, it's in the very early development stages. We will have more, more information for you by the next council meeting, or we'll have something on your agenda for the next council meeting. I appreciate y'all's support for those council people that I have had, that I've had an opportunity to speak to about it, and I think this is the best way to do it. We, we cannot be in a business that's not making money. I mean, I'm just going to be very blunt with that. If we're in the business of break tags, we should be in the business of break tags because it's a revenue source. If we're not in that, if we're not getting revenue out of it, and we can still give that to our employee, to our residents, and make sure that they feel comfortable with a Kenner break tag, let's do it. Let's do it, and let's outsource it. That's it, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion by Council Member Wilmot, seconded by Council Member McKinney to approve the consent agenda. Council members, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes seven zero. Under the public appearance agenda, item nine, item, public hearings for final passage, item nine A, summary ordinance number 12,717, and ordinance approving the lease of lots 76, 77, 78, and 79, square 181 Veteran Heights subdivision, Kenner Jefferson Parish, Louisiana, to branch communication for the purpose of placing a cell tower as shown on the attached survey by SMW Engineering Group Incorporated dated May 19th, 2020, case P dash four dash 20.
We have a motion by council member Segura, seconded by Council Member McKinney to open the public hearing. Council members, please vote.
Council President, can I have a question?
Council President, I'm sorry, I cannot see all of the council members now. I don't, they put up the screen.
Council President.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilman Segura.
I have Councilman Carroll on my phone. He is trying to get in and is not able to get in, so that's why we don't see him at the moment. If somebody could help him get in.
We're trying to have a member of the IT staff call him, tell him Kenneth's calling him right now.
IT's calling.
You want to, Council President, you want to wait a minute because it is probably when everybody on this.
Yeah, I just hung up, so if y'all call him, we should wait to let him get in.
Okay, let's give it a couple of minutes.
And Theresa, you might want to re-vote on that measure that you just had for seven zero.
I'm so sorry, I apologize. I thought I saw him.
It's okay, it's okay.
All right, that would be the consent agenda. Can we re-vote when he, when he gets here, please?
That's what we'll have to do.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Segura, did he tell you where he is trying to get in?
No, he just said he was trying to get in, waiting to get in.
I think he's been at the, in the past at the EOC.
Theresa, depending upon how he comes in, you may have to flip through the screens to make sure you see him.
Adam, who is helping him, do you know?
Me and Kenneth George are trying to help him right now.
I'm going to give Kenneth George a plug. He's, he's, he's very efficient. He really is. Good addition. Let's do this. Let's go ahead and vote on item eight with six people, please, just so that we can continue. Again, motion by Councilman Wilmot, seconded by Councilman McKinney to approve the consent agenda. Council people, please vote. Madam, Madam Clerk.
Motion passes six zero.
Good.
Councilman Carroll is in.
Great. Hello. Welcome, Councilman Carroll.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, we're on nine A.
Yes, sir. Would you like me to read it back into the record?
Please.
Yes, sir. Nine A, summary ordinance number 12,717, and ordinance approving the lease of lots 76, 77, 78, 79, square 181 Veteran Heights subdivision, Kenner Jefferson Parish, Louisiana, to branch communication for the purpose of placing a cell tower as shown on the attached survey by SMW Engineering Group Incorporated dated May 19th, 2020, case P dash one, P dash four dash 20.
Motion by Councilman Segura, seconded by Council Member McKinney to open the public hearing. Councilmen, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes seven zero.
Adam, is there anybody in the?
Glenn.
Any comments from the public?
Lanny, Lanny has a presentation.
No comments from the public so far. Planning has a presentation, I believe.
Yeah, so the applicant is in. I think he's, he shows up as E. Adams. This particular case. So thank you, Council President. I'm going to share my screen for a brief presentation on this case. These, these lots are located across from the, they're city-owned property across from the police station, generally bounded by I-10 to the north, Veterans Boulevard to the south, Decatur Street to the west. Lots currently undeveloped and used by the Kenner Police Department for storage and overflow parking. Lots are zoned C2 general commercial, as is the entirety of square 21. Applicant case is proposing to lease the subject lots in square 181 to place a cell tower on a 50 by 50 foot section of the locks. The tower is being relocated, relocated there from the red roof, I believe, which be the new north terminal access ramp. City hired Murphy Appraisal Services to perform an appraisal of the annual lease value of the subject lots. The appraisal was determined dated March 5th, set the annual lease values at $9,216 per year. City then put out an RFP for interested parties who would like to bid on leasing the space. They set the essential requirements at a minimum lease amount of $9,216 per year and the minimal terms as a one-year lease, five-year lease with two five-year renewals. We had one bidder on the RFP, and that was Branch. They proposed two options. Option one was a $15,000 per year lease with an initial five-year term and then four or five-year renewals. And this included an annual 3% escalator. Their option two was a $225,000 upfront lease with a 75-year term. After review, the city accepted lease option number one for this particular property. That concludes Planning Department's presentation.
Motion by Councilmember Segura, seconded by Councilmember McKinney to close the public hearing. Council members, please vote.
Were there anybody from the public yet wanted to talk?
I asked before, so if there is anybody, it's within the last couple of minutes.
I see no hands up.
Thank you.
Do you please vote?
Closing, closing the public.
Closing the public hearing, yes, sir. Motion passes seven zero.
Council President, may I make a suggestion that we do these as roll call votes to make sure somebody's, that we don't miss any hands in the future?
Okay. Motion by Councilman Segura, seconded by Councilmember McKinney to approve. Roll call?
No, I got, I got to speak first, Glenn, before we vote to approve.
Glenn, Mike's got to speak.
Okay.
Not so much I got to, but I have something to say. Give them a.
You do have an amendment.
Yeah. First off, just wanted to maybe give the chief an opportunity to see if he had any comments to this lease, since it's his property that he uses. Keith, you have any comments?
No, nothing that is, it's not going to interfere with any of the police department operations because it's, you can afford it. It's normally used just for storage of surplus cars that we actually take parts off of to keep the fleet running and for storage trailers that can easily, easily be moved. The only other concern I had, I think, is going to be taken care of with an amendment.
Thank you. Well, at this time, then, yeah, I do have an amendment I would like to have read. Council Clerk.
Yes, sir. I amend section five to read as follows, that the proceeds received from the lease of this property authorized by this ordinance be and are hereby dedicated to the Kenner Police Department's loss fund.
Motion on that.
Again, what we have is a motion by Councilman Segura, seconded by Councilmember McKinney to amend. Council members, please vote. Do we do a roll call? Can everybody see hands?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Before we vote, I had a question.
Yes, Councilman Wilmot.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to, the chief to elaborate on it as far as the status on this, how it would work.
Status on how what would work, the cell, the tower or the?
Tower and the proceeds.
Well, tower is just going to be a fenced in, like a freestanding tower that we have throughout the city. Similar, I know they, the specs, they have approval from the aviation or the FAA up to a certain town, but the procedure is going to go into a loss fund. Whether it was the, you know, the Kenner Police Department's loss fund is just going to sit for any lawsuits that we have to pay out in the future. It's just going to be a building fund.
Thank you.
Councilman Segura, do you want to elaborate on the amendment?
Councilman Carroll had his hand up.
Yes, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things. I, I'm not changing my vote. I'm going to support this. There's two things, and I guess either Ms. Foshee or the Director of Finance or even Planning. We have the contract, which was option one, five years, which is a straight five years. And then after that, four, five years. What is our mechanism, say after five years, that if we decide, for whatever reason, either the development of the police department, that we're going to need that land? What is it that we have to use? How many days we have to get out of this, to get out of this lease after the five years? And I guess either Planning or Finance will have the particulars of the contract. Councilman, the planning department doesn't actually control or handle the actual lease that's sent to the legal department once it's approved by the council. Okay, well, then I guess it'll be finance to, to answer that question. After the five years, and I'm just hypothetically saying that possibly the chief could want to do something with that property, which is more beneficial to the people. How do we address that if the chief decides that that is something, you know what, it's great, but we want to use that for something else? How do we, how do we contractually address that?
Chief, you got to unmoot.
I just want to be recognized first. With May, I do believe there's going to be an on-ramp that's going to be pretty much very close to this tower. So the city's ability to build is going to be, I guess, where the final layout for the, the on-ramp and this tower is, we're not going to probably be able to put any kind of large structure close to where it's going to stand. So any development, like I'll be long retired and happily to come visit. Happens, but there's ample room for, you know, towards veterans to build any kind of, you know, structure that the city would need.
Yeah, and that's good to know, and I'm glad to know that. I guess just my second part of that question was just in case to address the lease source to say, hey, we have some concerns. What is, what is our position to be able to, to negotiate if some things occur or happen? How long do we have before we are able to say, well, it's too late, we can't do it. We have to wait another year or five years or whatever. Ms. Foshee, I see your picture now, you about to?
All right, may I, Council President? So there, I don't believe there's a contract yet. You're awarding this so that the contract can be drafted by the legal department. So whatever terms need to be placed in that, I believe, would come from the legal department. So while I don't really mean to play hot potato here, I do believe the right person to respond to what's possible within the contract would be Mr. Rapier.
And this will be coming back to us. We're voting to, to get it out, to get all the particulars. We're not voting today to finalize it. We're voting to give them the opportunity.
I think Ed better answer that, but I, I think what you're doing is approving a contract along the terms of what's in the response. I don't know that there's a separate vote, but that could be something Mr. Rapier could.
Then I guess there's, my question, you understand my question, wanting to know. So I want to know that answer. So, Mr. Rapier.
See, we're playing hot potato and it's going from one hand to the other. The actual, this has gone through the planning and zoning process for the purposes of approving and authorizing the actual the request for the lease. The legal department has not sat down and negotiated any terms of the lease other than, than what was in the RFP, which gave the rights to, to, as to the dollar amount and the amount of term and the length of the term. We can certainly put. We can certainly put so, any, any language in there that, that the council would deem necessary. We have we haven't drafted the leases at this point, because it wa, if you all didn't authorize the, 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 the alienation, we, there wouldn't have been a need to draft a lease, so we have not drafted the lease at this.
With that being said, will this come back to us to finalize once my question is answered and the lease is drafted to the point where we get another chance to look at it? Is that going to happen?
Because it's not. What I see here, we have a motion by Segura. We have a second by McKinney to amend. We're still talking about the amendment. We have not voted on the amendment as of yet.
Okay, we can, we can do that.
I'll call that vote right now. Councilmembers, please vote on the amendment.
But I, I, I don't know if we amended it, does that make it, you know, do we still go back to the, the original legislation? And have questions, and if suppose it doesn't pass, then, then where are we?
Councilman Carroll, you can amend again if you would like to.
No, I don't want to amend, I just want to get the answer, the question answered.
Yeah, once we take the vote on the amendment, if it's approved or disproved, we go back to the original motion for discussion.
Okay, I, I'm, I, I can handle that too, but I am going to need an answer to say, will this come back to us to get that, my question answered? And it to be inside of the lease to address my question.
Councilman Segura, do you want to amend your amendment?
Well, no, there's no need to amend the amendment. The amendment is to to dedicate the funding a hundred percent to the police department. So if we take the vote on that, then we can go back to the whole body of the approval to see if anybody else wants anything.
Okay, that's fine.
Councilmembers, any question on the amendment at this point? We've talked about it some while ago. Does everybody understand the amendment? All right, councilmembers, please vote on the amendment. That's unanimous.
Yes, sir. Councilmembers, I, I'm sorry, Council President, motion passes seven zero.
The, the answer, Councilman Carroll, to get back to answering, answering your question, the, my understanding, and, and I'm getting a text right now. In fact, I just got sent an email, hold on one second.
Adam, while we're waiting, anybody from the public wants to comment?
I see no hands raised.
The discussions with Branch Communication is that they're, that they have the options to extend it at each five-year increment. And so it's at the tenants, it is at the tenants' option, not the city's.
I think we should have an option. I, I believe we go into this contract, we need an option too, to say, hey, you know, guys, we're happy what's going on, but because of this or because of that, there are some concerns that we have. I think that should be somewhere in there for us to be in there. Us being the city.
Councilman Carroll, do you want to amend?
Well, I'd have to, I would love to speak with the legal department, just to make sure the i's are dotted, the t's are crossed. So as opposed to amending at this very moment, just to make sure, I would rather, you know, defer for another meeting so we can get all that, you know, unless there's something right now to be presented to me, and I don't think there is.
All right, I'll accept that as an amendment, that we table this until the next meeting. Do you have a second?
What, it's not a.
Wait, wait.
No, it's not an.
It wouldn't be an amendment, Council President, it would be a mo, I, if I understood, Councilman Carroll, it would be a motion to defer for one meeting.
Yes. Councilman Brennan.
Thank you, Council Chair. So, Ed, did you say the contract has not been drawn up or the lease unfinalized?
The, 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 there is a working draft of the lease. I'm, I would presume that, that, that Branch, I have not been directly involved in these negotiations, Councilman.
So again, all we're voting for is to allow that to move forward.
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Standard, in a standard lease, is, is there, isn't there usually a clause to non-renew the lease or be the party to get out of the lease?
Usually, well, usually, depending upon the lease and the terms and, and the type of lease, usually the ability to continue in the league at the tenant's option, as long as there's no default and they are paying, especially if there's an escalation clause in there.
The, the leases that I've seen in the past for, for retail things that I recall always had that option, whether the shopping center holder, owner, pardon me, or the tenant did not wish to renew it at the end of a certain term, they had to give notice to, even party to give notice to the other within so many days.
I've seen it that way, Councilman Brennan, but I also, especially depending upon how much capital is being put into something by the tenant, I've also seen it been solely at the tenant's.
Carroll, should, should you amend it just to add that, 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 that verbiage at least be included in the lease?
No, I, I would, I would still want to stay with my motion to defer for one meeting, to, to have some more discussions about this. And all the things that you brought up, Councilman, is, is, is what I'm, what I'm talking to, to be able to have language like that. I think to get it off the cuff right now is not doing it proper, uh, doing it properly. That we should put some thought into this to make sure before we sign off. And if we sign off on it today, it's going to be, there is no going back to it.
Mr. Mayor, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I'm, Ed, I'm just concerned, what is the timeframe on this? We, we have enough time, because I know I had, the administration had received a few calls, that this was a timely matter.
The issue for this, this is replacing the cell tower that came off of the Red Roof Inn. There are multiple cell providers that are using mobile cell towers at that location. I, I don't know, I, I don't know the, the construction timeline. I know we're also working with DOTD for a servitude in the back there for as, as the chief was talking about, there's going to be an on-ramp there, near there. It's all about dealing with the same issues.
Right, and this is a very fast-moving project in that area, and I'm just concerned that we start hold, that if the council starts holding things up, does it, you know, prohibit us from getting things done quickly and getting this put into place? Councilman Carroll, what is it exactly you want to put into it?
Well, first of all, I, I don't think I'm holding you up by asking you this information. I want to have some verbiage, some language put into it as it address the to have a, a, something in it to say, hey, this is something that you would not like to go further with this, or be able to address some concerns. Just like Councilman Brennan said, in most contracts, there's a clause in it that people have an opportunity, you have to stay in or to get out. And that's not in there, based on what I'm hearing.
It currently isn't, the, the, the renewal option is at the at, at the tenant's option.
Yes, and I don't think that's put, put us in a good spot. The one week, one meeting deferral to be able to get that.
Well, before we consider another motion, we still have to vote, councilmembers, on the ordinance as amended.
But no, Council, Council President, if a motion to defer would take precedence on your motion to vote.
Okay, what is the motion to defer? In exact language, so we all understand. Councilman Carroll.
Yes, my motion would be a one meeting deferral to be able to institute or to incorporate language that will give the city of Kitter a, a position of not renewing the option if something occurs that, that we find to be in default or no longer to move forward.
Councilman Carroll, also, if everybody can speak up, I may have a hard time. Does everybody understand that? Does anybody have a second to that motion? Councilman Wilmot. Councilmembers, please vote on the motion.
I have a question.
Councilman Segura.
Well, my question is, is, and I know Councilman Carroll said we're not trying to hold it up. Wasn't clear between the mayor or the attorney on the timelines that were in the RFP or whatever, that put this approval process in place for the guy to build his tower. This not going to cause a problem with that. Then the other thing is, is that insertion of language, and this is the city attorney, is that something that you foresee have the ability to do based on the language of the RFP?
Councilman Segura, who are you addressing that question to?
The last question was city attorney, because he says it can go either way. So I'm just trying to elaborate that by deferring it, is that something that he can work on to put in? If it's not something he can work on to put in because of language in the RFP, then it doesn't mean, it doesn't do us any good to defer this.
Mr. Rapier?
Councilman, I haven't looked at the language that's in the RFP, so to answer your question directly, I don't know. I know that the lease has been negotiated or been, there, the, the, the general terms, the lease has been back and forth with the, the branch communication. Whether this would fill the, the, their proposal or not, I can't answer that question. I don't know.
All right, fair enough. All right, we have a motion on the floor to delay one meeting by Councilmember Carroll, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. Let's vote on that, all, all approve that.
Councilman, can you please do a roll call vote?
I'm sorry. Statement before we move forward.
Councilman Carroll, I can't hear you.
I say, Mr. President, I have one statement to make before we move forward with the vote.
Okay.
One is talking to the, listening to the mayor, listening to, to the attorney, nothing was assured that we are late or we will be late if we take this time. If we don't take this time, we are not working on behalf of the city to not address this. If we vote today and the, the motion to defer not one meeting, so we can make this whole for the city, then I would not be able to support this, because I think we are rushing through it and not putting the city in a good position, so.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments before we vote?
Hold, hold on a minute. Legal, how long you been working on this? And that's probably for Eric.
Eric would have the answer to that better than I do.
We started this process and Wendell, I don't know how long we put the RFP out, but it was, it's been the fall, at least the fall, last fall.
Right, so I don't, I don't want anybody to think that when, when things are being worked on by the administration and the legal department before it gets to the council, that we have not, not been working on it. We have been working on it for quite a long time, and I got to yield it to legal. And I think it's something we've also, the chief and I, Chief Plays and I have had numerous discussions on, chief. So don't anybody, y'all, y'all do what y'all got to do, but before you vote, it's not something that the administration, the Kenner Police Department administration, nor our legal department, we have been working on this for quite some time.
And, and let me just make sure everybody understands, based on some of the comments, it is not unusual, and in fact, quite common when you're leasing raw land with no building on it, and the tenant is putting major improvements to that land, that the tenant controls the option to renew, and the landlord doesn't have that ability, because the tenant bases its going into the lease on the ability to be there for a specific amount of time, because they may determine that if the ti, if that timeline is that they need is not there, then it doesn't make economic sense for them to make the improvements to the land that they're talking about. So if, I, I can't tell you, because as I say, I was not the one that negotiated this. But I can, I can't tell you whether Branch Communication would walk away from this or say that's not acceptable. But I can tell you that in my experience, these types of leases are solely at the ben, the options to renew, as long as there is a escalation clause in the, in the, the rent, an automatic escalation clause, which we have. And there re, and there are of, of, of terms to default and kick them out if they're not paying their rent or they're not doing the things that they're supposed to, that it is normally at the less easy's op, the, the less easy's option to extend, because they look at a term in order to return, get the return on their capital investment. So we can, we can go and ask Branch, I, I would tend to believe they asked for the terms that they did, the length of the lease as they did, because of the need to return their, get the return on their capital investment. So I would be, I would be highly surprised if we went back to Branch Communication and said at each renewal, that it's, it's got to be a mutual agreement to move forward. I would be highly shocked if they would agree to that.
Councilmember McKinney?
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Munn, who's been interacting with Branch Communication.
You go, speak louder.
Yes, I have a question for Mr., Mr. Munn, Attorney Munn, yeah, who's been interacting with Branch Communications. Do you know how long, I know it's previously, they had a previous location for the equipment at the hotel that's, that was that was taken over for the renovations to the, for these interstate. How long, do you know how long that was, that lease was in place? Because it had to been for many years.
The one, the one on the, the hotel that they previously had?
Yes.
I, I, I do not know that. I can try and find that out for you, but I'm not sure that number off the top of my, that term off the top of my head.
Okay, I guess I was just, I was just was questioning that, just because I would think that, as Mr. Rapier said, that this is going to be a long-term, a long-term lease, if they're doing improvements in for a cell tower, until technology changes to have, you know, things besides cell technology, then I would think this is probably, their intention is to have a long-term, so, thank you.
I have a question. We're talking here about rededicating to the police loss fund. What kind of dollars are we talking about on an annual basis?
Fifteen thousand dollars, Councilman.
Fifteen thousand dollars on an annual basis.
Councilman, just so, just so we're clear, the reason the city accepted the option, that, that particular option, because based on the terms that were proposed to the city over the course of the thirty-year lease, total of seven hundred and thirteen thousand dollars over that time period with that three percent escalator. So that will be the total, i, if the lease were to run to its proposed conclusion, the total revenues to the city over that period will be about seven hundred and fourteen thousand dollars.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion on the floor by Councilman Carroll. We have a second by Councilman Wilmot. All in favor of the motion?
President, can I please ask that you roll call vote, starting with the at-large A position?
And if everybody could speak up.
Go ahead, please vote.
You can do it, Councilman. You can do it, clerk. Christie?
Yes.
Councilman Carroll?
Yes.
Councilman Segura?
No.
Councilman Hayes?
No.
Councilman Brannigan?
No.
Mr. Chairman, motion failed.
You gotta get Brennan.
I'm sorry, I apologize. Councilman Brennan?
It's okay, Natalie, I mean. No, no.
Motion fails four to three to defer. Now you're on your original motion.
Rhysa, let me just clarify, I actually voted, I voted no, but I actually put my hand up because it's on mute, so I was against the deferral as well.
I apologize, the motion is five-two. Councilmembers Segura, Hayes, Brannigan, Brennan, and Wilmot opposed.
No.
Oh, no, no.
And McKenny?
No.
Councilman Wilmot voted for the deferral.
Councilman. Councilman Wilmot and Councilman Carroll voted for the deferral. The other five voted against the deferral.
All right. So we're back to the motion by Councilmember Segura, seconded by Councilmember McKinney to amend. Council members, please vote on the amendment.
We've already voted on the amendment.
Councilman, Council Chairman, you voted on the amendment. You're voting on the, on the ordinance as amended.
Amended.
Thank you. Does everybody understand that? And you all approve?
And, and again, I asked that you do it by roll call vote.
Go for it.
Councilman McKenny?
Yes, in favor.
Yes. Councilman Wilmot?
Yes, in favor.
Councilman Segura?
Yes, in favor.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Brannigan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Teresa, no.
Councilman Carroll?
Councilman Carroll.
I'm so sorry. Councilman Carroll, what is wrong with me?
You're okay. No, not in favor.
Motion passes six zero. Councilman Carroll opposed.
Six one. Zero, six one.
Six one.
Teresa is six one.
Six one. I apologize.
All right, Madam Clerk, item nine B.
Item nine B is summary ordinance number 12,719, an ordinance levying the annual millage tax mills rates for the year 2020 totaling 17 and 1700ths mill on the dollar of the assessed valuation of all taxable property within the corporate limits of the city of Kenner, Louisiana on the 2020 tax roll.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, seconded by Councilmember Hayes to open the public hearing. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero.
Adam, is anybody in the audience wishing to comment?
I see no hands raised.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Brannigan, seconded by Councilmember Hayes to close the public hearing. Council members, please vote.
Councilwoman McKenny? Motion passes seven zero.
All right. Counsel, uh, motion by Councilman Brannigan, seconded by Councilmember Hayes to approve.
Councilmember Wilmot's got a question.
We, a, a, and I think there's going to be an amendment.
Councilman Wilmot, you had your hand up?
Yes, sir. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to ask, and I don't know who the, to, to pose this question to, but, um, looking at the way that the legislation is drafted, it indicates that it's the same, uh, amount of mills as it was last year. My question is, and I just wanted, I don't know who to direct this to, uh, but please chime in whoever would know the answer. Has any of this expired or is it renewed or, uh, please describe that?
None of them are expired, Councilman. Every year you pass an ordinance in which you levy for the following year. Usually do it around June, but since we had a little situation going on out in the community, it's running a little late, but we're working with the assessor and we still have time. So what you're doing is doing what you would do every single year in levying the assessment. What's different this year is that every four years, the assessor goes out and evaluates the properties. So this year, the property values in Kenner are up. They're not up significantly, but they're up a little bit. So by applying the mills to the new assessed value, there is a slight increase. I think that that information can be better addressed by Mr. Wetzel, who has the spreadsheet in front of him.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Wetzel?
Yeah, so I'm going to share my spreadsheet here. Okay, so what you see here is exactly what Ms. Foshee said. So we are going to assess the exact same millage as we had last year on this coming tax roll. Due to the reassessment, it does change, um, some of the revenues that we will receive, but the millage itself does not change. It, it is exactly the same.
Okay. So yeah, so it remains the same. So it's, this is a renewal of, of millages from last year.
That is correct.
That's, that's all I have. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anybody else has a comment? Adam, is there anybody who wants to comment in the public?
I see no hands up, Councilman.
All right.
Councilman, I'd like to read the amendment into the record, please. Um, we're going to change section, section one, and we're going to omit 17 and 700ths and add in 11 and 5800ths. Under the millage dedication, we're going to remove the words acquiring, construction, improving, and maintaining public streets. Under the 2020 mills hereby levied, it's going to be removed 5.59 and add in 11.58. And then under the 2019 mills for comparison, we're going to remove 5.59 and add in 11.58. And that concludes the amendment.
Motion by Councilmember Brannigan, seconded by Councilperson Hayes to close the public hearing.
Council, Glenn, Wilmot had his hand up.
Again, when y'all have, when you have your hands up, please raise it so I can see it.
I had a question as to the, I had a question as to the amendment. You were closing your public hearing. I, I'm ready to vote on that. But I had a question as to the amendment.
Did we not close the public hearing already?
Closed the public hearing. We're on the amendment now.
Well, now the discussion on the amendment can take place.
Yes, sir.
Does everybody understand?
Yeah, and, and, and I have questions on the amendment.
Councilman Wilmot?
Okay, the amendment, I, I, I haven't received anything on it. Don't know the details on it. And, and I understand that this is changing mills from one thing to another, and I'd like to know more details on that.
Councilman Wilmot, all we're doing is removing from the vote the road millage. That's all we're doing.
You're removing it and it, and what is, what is taking place with those mills?
Those mills will, it will come back up to you for a vote in September.
Okay, okay. So, so the nothing's, nothing's increasing. It, it, it's fa, in fact, we have something decreasing if we lose in the rose mills and then that's going to come back later.
Councilman Wilmot, you're not losing the ro, road millage. Those mills are not going away. They're just going away for the purposes of this vote.
Right, right.
The millage numbers you see for the ones that remain are the exact same millage numbers that were voted, that were last year's millage numbers. And, and the road millage will come up for a vote, uh, hopefully the first meeting in September.
But thank you for that clarification. That helps a lot. Thank you.
That's the only change. You will be voting on the road millage. Uh, it just, it was necess, it, it was necessary to move it to a different vote.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right. I believe we're on a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, seconded by Councilmember Hayes to approve.
Yes, sir.
All in favor? Council Clerk?
Yes, sir. Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. All right. Now, I think we're on a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, seconded by Councilmember Hayes to amend. Council members, please vote on the amendment.
No, co, 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 Council, Council Chairman?
Yes.
Your vote that you just had, I believe, was the vote to approve the amendment. Now you would be voting on it as amended.
Okay, thank you. Everybody vote, please. Council Clerk?
Motion passes seven zero.
Adam, any comments from the public?
You've seen no hands raised, Councilman.
Thank you.
Item 10 is opening of bids. We have none. Item 11 is reclassification of zoning for final passage. We have none. Item 12 is other ordinances for final passage. Item 12A is summary ordinance number 12,724, an ordinance in Chapter 6 of the Kenner Code of Ordinances regarding violations of declaration of emergencies and to provide for related matters.
All right, Council. Motion by Councilmember Segura, seconded by Councilmember Hayes to approve.
What, that's question?
Councilmember Segura has his hand up, sir.
Where are you, Councilman? You're ju, jumping around. Oh, there you are now. Okay.
The question that I'd like to address, I believe, would go to the city attorney is just to give some ordinance change.
Jennifer, I can speak up.
The ordinance change, it has to do with declarations of emergencies. State law provides for declaration of emergencies by parish presidents, specifically in state law provides for a enforcement provision for that. Uh, state law provides for mayors to have the ability to declare emergencies, but is silent on the enforcement of it. Uh, in looking at other municipalities, most have some form of an enforcement provision. Our ordinance de, doesn't. This just provides for the enforcement of emergency, uh, emergency declarations by the mayor. And, and it has to, whether it's a hurricane, whether it's a tornado, whether it's a flood, whether, it just provides some form of enforcement.
All right, that's, um, I mean, I, I understand that, so I'm okay with that. Thank you.
Councilman Wilmot, you got your hand up?
Yes, sir. I appreciate it again, Mr. President. Um, I guess this is for Legal as well. Um, I just wanted to look at the actual language in section one, subpart D.
Subpart D. Well, that's the only change in the language besides the heading that we do.
Well, you adding in, yeah, the heading, you're adding in emergency orders. And then, and D, you're adding in, um, the language that's underlined. And it, and it grants, from what I'm seeing, it grants, um, very broad, um, and it's not specific. This language that's in here now, that, that it, it's actually, um, dealing with, is dealing with price gouging. And then now we're adding in broad language to allow any provision of an emergency order issued by competent official under authority of declaration of emergency made pursuant to state law. It goes in and adds in the, 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 uh, misdemeanor charges and so forth. So this is, this is given broad authority from what I'm seeing. Uh, is that correct?
Yes, sir. tracked state law.
So it, but this is, uh, again, it's broad language. So anytime in the future, it won't be necessary to come back to the council for, for reapproval of something that is a state of emergency and there's a provision in it. We're, we're actually, uh, allowing, uh, authority now for all future acts of emergency. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Just want to make sure that's understood.
The state law that we, we copied this off of, and it, it, you can find that at Louisiana Revised Statute 29:727G, says, "In the event of an emergency declared by a parish president pursuant to this chapter, which is the Homeland Security and Disaster Act, any person, corporation, or anybody else who violates any order, rule, or regulation promulgated pursuant to this chapter shall be fined not more than $500 or confined to the parish jail for not more than six months." And that's the exact same powers and authorities that this amendment to our ordinance gives. So state law gives it to the ability for parish presidents to enforce their emergency orders. Um, most mu, a lot of municipalities have in their ordinances the ability for the mayors of those municipalities to enforce their emergency proclamations issued pursuant to the Homeland, uh, Security Act. All we're doing is taking that same language and putting it back into our ordinances so this mayor or any future mayor has the ability to enforce an, uh, uh, emergency proclamations.
So, um, who, who would enforce this? Who's the enforcer of it?
It could be the police department. It could be the code department. It could be, uh, the fire department.
Okay, so any of those votes, okay?
All the people have authority under our ordinances to issue misdemeanor summonses.
Are there any other cities that give this broad authority away like this is proposing to do?
Yes, sir.
Who?
New Orleans, for example.
Okay, so, uh,
That's the one that comes to my head immediately.
Do a lot of cities, do a lot of municipalities go on a case-by-case basis and grant it specifically tailored to a particular need?
That would be very do, I don't know that for a fact, Councilman. That would kind of be difficult because think of what it takes to get a ordinance passed or an amendment to an ordinance to pass. You, you would be multiple weeks in the middle of an emergency. That would not be, that would be kind of cumbersome to make that occur.
And that's what we're, we did with the, apparently in, in his, history, we did it some time ago with the price gouging issue, from what I'm seeing. It looks like that this was a tailored, uh, permit.
Well, no, i- i- it's an ongoing provision concerning price gouging. It's out there at any emergency, if there's price gouging, there's this authority. What this is saying is out there, if there's ever another emerg, if there's an emergency and the mayor issues an emergency proclamation and there is a term in there that people refuse to comply with, the mayor has the ability to enforce that.
Okay.
By use of, of the misdemeanor.
I appreciate that. This is just, it's very broad in the way it's worded. Um, it does say any provision of an emergency order. So I just want to make sure that's abundantly clear. But thank, thank you for your response. And, and I just want to, uh, based off a lot of that information that was just provided, I just think that this language is very broad. It should be made for particular purposes, but it's not. Um, and it's given, given away authority of the council that we have now that we won't have once this is passed. And again, this authority should be more specific, and it's not. Um, each particular request should be fully vetted. This will not allow for future, for, and, and with all due respect to the mayor and, 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 but it, it's future mayors beyond this administration as well. Um, this goes and gives that authority away. So therefore, because of that, I'm going to be opposed to this legislation pending any, any amendments.
Councilman Wilmot, was this language adopted into state law when you were in the legislature?
I, I, I don't, uh, first off, I, I do, don't, don't think so. Um, uh, but that's not, that's not for me to expound on. I'm here for this particular thing for right now, and this is the way I, and that's a state. If it were, it was a state issue. This is a city issue. And I think municipalities, we're dealing with, we need to have things that need to be properly vetted. And I think in the future, just to give a carte blanche, um, authority like this, I think it's going above and beyond.
Mayor, you have your hand up. You do have your hand up. Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. And, uh, Council, Councilman Wilmot, I, I appreciate, because I, I don't think you're directing it toward me, just like you're probably not directing it toward Cynthia Lee Shane because she's, she's, she has that ability right now. And I, I will say this, she has not abused it. But you're right. I don't think you're concerned about this mayor because I'm not concerned myself. I don't think this council's concerned with me. If ever, if this passes, I still keep my open communication with this council. Before I do things like this, I call y'all in, just like the mask mandate. I called you in for that, or at least by Zoom. When I say called you in, I mean by Zoom. But just like this council can give the mayor's office this ability, a future council that has a mayor that abuses it, not this mayor, will be able to take it away. So I want the people of Kenner to know that the council would still be able to come back and take that power or that ability, I should say, away from a mayor that would abuse it, just like the state could take it away from parish presidents if they abuse it. I don't think you see that happening. Municipalities are in parishes right now. So I just wanted to state that for the record.
All right. Any other comments before we vote?
Councilman Carroll has his hand up, and then I will.
Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Two things. One, I want to thank the mayor for that con, for that comment because that's exactly what I was going to say. Even though we, we support this now, if next week or next month or next year, something arises where we have concerns, then we as a council have the ability to recall it and to address it. So thank you, Mayor, for that. And that will apply for, for each council and any mayor going. My second question is, within the verbiage of it, uh, uh, Mr. Attorney, it says pro tem. If the mayor's not here, pro tem. Now, pro tem to me means, based on our charter, that would be the president of the council, correct?
Down in the Down in the, that's, this is one of our very old ordinances. Uh, I think the important part to look, a- and, and it uses the name pro tem, and yes, that would be the president of the council if the mayor wasn't here, because that's who acts as the mayor in that case. But we, we try to take part of, take care of that rule, just a little bit that we were grafting in here by saying issued by a competent official under the authority, uh, by, of the emergency declaration by state law. State law gives the ability, the only ability is to, to the mayor, so it would be the person acting in the mayor's position.
Right. And part of my reasoning, reasoning for bringing this up because of my tenure on the council and pro tem is not really something that we use in the city of Kenner, but for all of my fellow councilmen who are new, that person would be the council. Right now, it'd be Mr. Hayes to be acting in that position in case the mayor is out of town. And the reason I bring it up, because in a, in a, in a prior administration, that was attempted to change, to give that authority to someone who was not elected by the people. And I just wanted to make sure that we're not, we wasn't going down that road to, to do that. So as long as we're good on that, I, I'm good. And just to for cl-
Councilman, that's why I grafted the language I did using, uh, the person authorized, the competent official authorized under state law, which is the man.
Right. Everybody doesn't know what pro tem means sometimes, who, who that person. So I wanted to make-
Brings us back to Councilman Brennan's request last week, last meeting, and the, the city attorney's work, office is working on it, is reviewing, uh, uh, ordinances and council rules to see what changes may be ma- made. It's going to be a little bit of a daunting task, Councilman Brennan gave us, but we are in the process.
Well, I think you're up to it. I just wanted to, this for clarity, for everybody else in the audience to know who that person would be. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilmember Wilmot?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a real brief question, uh, for legal. Does this have retroactive activity or?
Criminal actions retroactive.
Okay, so this, this is only going forward?
This would be going forward from the date it becomes effective.
Great, thank you.
Any other comments? All right, we have a motion on the floor by council member Segura, seconded by council member Hayes to approve. All in favor? Any opposed?
Councilwoman Wilmot is opposed.
Adam clerk?
Passes six one, Councilman Wilmot opposed.
Adam clerk?
Yes, sir. Item twelve B is summary ordinance number twelve thousand seven twenty-five, an ordinance accepting an award in the amount of one million, one hundred thousand dollars for the use of L, L E A D lead hazard grant funds in the city of Kenner for the Department of Community Development.
Councilman Carroll?
Councilman, I need the motion.
Hello?
I'm sorry, I did not hear what you said.
We have a motion by council member Carroll, seconded by council member Wilmot to approve. Any, any questions, any comments? Council members, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero.
Ms. Shaw, you got off easy.
Item thirteen is resolutions and motions by council members. We have none. Item fourteen is items removed from the consent agenda. We have none. Item fifteen is acceptance, acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item fifteen A is summary ordinance number twelve thousand seven twenty, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from VLD Services LLC to provide preventative maintenance for existing sanitary and storm sewers, including service laterals, in accordance with sealed bid number twenty dash sixty-five fifty-five, in an amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars for the Department of Public Works.
All right, we have a motion by council member Branigan, seconded by council member McKinney to approve. Council members, please vote.
Council, Council President, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen B is summary ordinance number twelve thousand seven twenty-one, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Casco Industries Incorporated for the purchase of G I Air Masks for self-contained breathing apparatus for the depart- fire department in accordance with bid number twenty dash nineteen fifty-nine in an amount not to exceed seven thousand six hundred fourteen dollars.
We have a motion by council member Brennan, seconded by council member Branigan to approve. Council members, please vote.
Council President, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen C is summary ordinance number twelve thousand seven twenty-two, an ordinance accepting the lowest bid, responsive bid received from Premier Chemicals and Services for a contract to provide sodium hydrochloride on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid number twenty dash sixty-five fifty-eight in an amount not to exceed seventy-one thousand one hundred nine ninety dollars for the Department of Wastewater.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Motion by council member Branigan, seconded by council member Carroll to approve. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen D is summary ordinance number twelve thousand seven twenty-three, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Pennant Shop to supply flags in accordance with letter bid twenty dash nineteen sixty in an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars annually for the Department of General Services.
Again, council, motion by council member Wilmot, seconded by council member Brennan to approve. Council people, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero. Item sixteen is ordinances and resolutions in summary for first reading. Item sixteen A is an ordinance ratifying the emergency repair of treatment plant bar screen number two by Cooster's Water in an amount not to exceed twenty thousand six hundred twenty, thirty-two dollars for the Department of Wastewater. Item sixteen B is an ordinance approving an agreement with geographic information systems, GIS services, with Eloos Environmental LLC in an amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars annually. Item sixteen C is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid from Osborne Associates Incorporated to supply aluminum sheet and sign blanks as needed in accordance with sealed bid number twenty thou- twenty dash sixty-five sixty-two in an amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars for the Department of General Services. Item sixteen D is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Gil's Carpet Sales Incorporated to furnish and install tile as needed in accordance with sealed bid number twenty dash sixty-five sixty-three in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars annually for the Department of General Services. Item sixteen E is an ordinance approving the plan of re-subdivision of lots one through sixteen and twenty-three through twenty-seven, square thirty-four, and lots twenty-four through forty, square thirty-five, Crestview Office and Industrial Park, Kenner, Jefferson Parish, Louisiana, and two lots one dash A, five dash A, seven dash A, ten dash A, thirteen dash A, sixteen dash A, twenty-three dash A, and twenty-five dash A, square thirty-four, and lots twenty-four dash A, twenty-seven dash A, thirty dash A, thirty-three dash A, thirty-six dash A, and forty dash A, square thirty-five, Kenner, Jefferson Parish, Louisiana, in accordance with a survey by KLS Group Incorporated dated April twenty-first, twenty twenty, case number P dash five dash twenty. Item sixteen is an ordinance approving a conditional use for an oil change facility on lots twenty-six A one, square one seventy-seven, Briarwood Subdivision, Kenner, Jefferson Parish, Louisiana, which property is zone Z two, in accordance with the site and landscape plans dated April twenty-eight, twenty twenty, and an evaluation plan dated March thirtieth, twenty twenty, all by Beacon Civil Engineering, and signed plans by Signs Unlimited Incorporated dated April thirtieth, twenty twenty, case number P dash six dash twenty. Item seventeen is reports from the, and our council committees.
Councilman Segura?
Thank you, Council President. It, it's going with, you know, the times that we are with COVID and, and the hardships that it's placing on residents and businesses. Unfortunately, I, I want to announce that a twenty-eight-year restaurant in the city of Kenner District Two has decided not to stay open, and as of Sunday, will shut down. Franny's Restaurant on Williams Boulevard has been a staple here in the city of Kenner for many, many years, and is still heavily, uh, uh, go to place in the morning for breakfast and lunch by people. But, um, this crisis has decided that it's time for her to retire and move on to a, a more relaxed time. So unfortunately, Franny's Restaurant will be closing as of Sunday. So I want to wish her, uh, many more years of, of comfort in her retirement and thank her for all the twenty-eight years she has provided this city with a good restaurant and a good gathering place for a lot of people. So thank you, Franny, for what you've done.
Any other? Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President. And, uh, I just have a couple of comments. I normally don't, don't comment after we go through legislation and, uh, previously, but I, I, I'm compelled just to have this brief comment relates to the hours, uh, we're going to move forward on. And my concerns, uh, briefly, is that we are the property owners. We have a dog in a fight. If someone comes to us with a proposition, we, as the properties on, have the right and language in it. Now, the other person may not like it, but it's our due diligence for the city of Kenner. There was never, my question wasn't answered, meaning the question I was answered, asking, was not in there. The lo- the length of time to get this done was never in question. I think we could have deferred it. But what landlord cannot terminate a lease? My, I just signed, signed another lease for my son who's out of town, and in that, if my son does something that's not becoming of a tenant, the landlord has the right to terminate his lease. So for us to give that up or not even to revisit it, I think is not, we are not doing what we should do for the city of Kenner. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other comments under section seventeen? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Item eighteen is new business. We have none. Item nineteen is unfinished business and our motions to reconsider are renewed from a table position. We have none. Item twenty is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
Adam, do we have anybody?
Uh, we do. Mr. Al Morello is up first.
Yes, sir.
Al, go ahead, are you ready?
East Loyola, drought, fifth district, forty-eight years. To add to the mayor's comments early in the meeting concerning the treasure test, uh, one thing, uh, he didn't mention, they laying off three hundred and forty people from the treasure test casino as well. Two, uh, New York and Company, uh, Big Ladies Apparel, ladies' fashion in the mall is closed, gone, gone out of business. I want to direct this to Councilman Brennan and Mr. Schreiner, our Public Works Department. Several months ago, I talked about the curbing on part of two hundred block of East Loyola and several blocks on West Loyola, a project that was ten years in the making that has not been completed. Meantime, we got in the turn, we got a massive pothole where people have tore up the neutral ground between the neutral ground and the street and a massive pothole. We also got people just breaking up with another pothole where East Loyola intersects Sunset. And third, we need to get this natural gas line that runs parallel to this bridge on East Loyola inspected. They were inspecting it on a regular basis. The parish and the city of Kenner were working in tandem with one another. I haven't seen any inspections done on this pipeline now in quite some time. So this is some issues. I know we tight for money right now, but this is stuff concerning our street, and that curbing that could be done in-house by Public Works Department, and I'm sure we haven't made anybody off in our Public Works Department. And that's about all I have for the day. Anybody got any comments, any questions? Thank you.
Adam, anybody else?
Mr. Greg Teft?
Madam Clerk, please, uh, also make sure we're looking at three minutes.
You can go ahead, Greg.
Yes, uh, this is Greg Teft on West Loyola, growing Kenner. Uh, I just have one comment, and I got one question. And one comment is that, uh, if we do move some people to code enforcement, I would like the city to consider going to a proactive code enforcement program. Because I think that would, uh, benefit not only the city in the long run, but I think it would benefit residents as well, making Kenner a better place to live. My other que- but I do have a question for Candace Watkins. Candace, are we working with the Kenner businesses on, with, for the Main Street Recovery Grant Program? Are we helping them with that? And, and that's really all I have. I'd just like to hear if you can put that through. Thank you.
Greg, we have posted that information on all of our social media sites. We know that KBA is familiar with it. Raphael is, um, uh, networking with our Latino businesses because, uh, forty million dollars of the two hundred and seventy-five million dollars is being set aside for minority, female, and veteran-owned businesses. So yes, we are trying hard to get the word out to people about that program.
Mr. Teft, are you through?
Yes, Councilman.
I didn't hear that. Any other comments? Adam?
I see no other hands raised, councilman.
I have one more, one more thing.
Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is kind of a, a, a hybrid from our last meeting, two things. As I want to say that, I'd like to thank all the citizens in the city of Kenner for their, for their working with the administration and the council about wearing a mask. I know, I know it is, it is cumbersome. I know it is not comfortable for a lot of people, but from my view, in the state, most people are, are taking a piece of it. To also thank the mayor for his great leadership. You know, I know it's kind of tough sometimes because everybody have a different opinion, but I think this is the right action for him to take. That being said, as we move closer to getting back to whatever is normal from last week, as it relates to the council chambers, as it relates to the, we do write video of the meetings, I think it's important that the police chief and the fire chief be part of that assessment, uh, sooner if not later, on how we're going to do that, the egress, ingress for that. They need to have a great part in this whenever we are back and be ready, do move back, input is there. So I'm asking that the chief and the fire chief as a part in this, as we look forward to the near future, we're getting back to our, uh, council chambers.
Thank you. You want to hear a motion to adjourn? Boo. Council, Segura and Branigan, thank you all so much. Thank you all.